Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to resume our meeting again. It's the Board of County Commissioners meeting, it's September 13th, 2022. And we are going to take our first order business, which is matters by the public. We're going to call the speakers who have filled out a card. You'll have three minutes to give us your thoughts on any matter that is of interest to you, and then we will take up our regular agenda. So I'm gonna ask you to take alternate sides. And Frank Scribisi, I'm sure you, I butchered your name, so you'll say it again for the clerk. And Linda Smith, I don't see you, where are you, Linda? There you are. Okay. After Linda will be Thane Loesman, so you'll go back over there. Loesman, okay, I'll get this right. Okay, and my vice mayor is going to time you, so you only get three minutes.
I'll start with my name.
You start with your name.
My name is Frank Schreibeis, and the document in my hand has smeared malfeasance across all three branches of our government. It is insufficient on its face due to the lack of the constitutionally required full faith and credit of the state being affixed to it, a nuthery seal, causing it to be, to not be legally recognizable. My comments concern the document in my hand, which was willingly, purposely, and with malicious intent, were written inaccurate, incomplete, and misleading for the purpose of procuring and securing material interests in contracts funded by the county, state, and federal government, including but not limited to bond, fingerprinting, transportation, state attorney, public defender, county, state court, health maintenance recording, health maintenance recording, care, custody, and control, and retirement services. The document in my hand is a solicitation for the procurement of above-listed services and contracts. The solicitation was submitted by a PBSO deputy to the Palm Beach County State Attorney's Office for presentation to the Palm Beach County Court for the issuance of bonds for these service contracts. This makes this solicitation an interest of the county, state, and federal government, which invokes this commission's jurisdiction, powers, and duties to investigate and prosecute any illegal actions taken by any county, department, official, officer, or employee pursuant to the provisions of Flores Statute Sections 125.01, subsection 1, 1B, 1S, 1W, and 1X. Not only is this solicitation incomplete, inaccurate, and misleading, but it was also authorized by a PBSO officer that doesn't have the right to serve the sheriff due to the failure to properly subscribe to his loyalty oath and oath of office pursuant to the provisions of Flores Statute Sections 30.09, 1A, which can be demonstrated by review of the other document in my hand, making it another cause of illegal action. Should this commission refuse its duties as cited above, I hereby request assistance with understanding the Palm Beach County Budget Instruction Manual so that appropriate action may be taken on the county's behalf. Thank you.
I'm assuming you have some paperwork you'd like to leave behind? If you give it to the gentleman right there, he'll take that, and we'll certainly have it reviewed. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ms. Smith, you're up.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I'm not gonna talk about the ag reserve, that's really refreshing, right? Drew Martin sends his regards. He would be here, but he's up in Martin County right now, speaking against a bad Martin County comprehensive plan called the rural lifestyles. I hope Martin County makes the correct decisions. I spoke to them this morning, so my notes are a little scattered right now, coming from two different counties. St. Lucy is currently battling also a rock mine, but you don't, you know, that's not your jurisdiction, it's just we are under attack all over South Florida. What I would like to talk to you today about is a little more about electric vehicle charging stations and electric buses. I did read the plan, and I understand there are six buses coming, and there's a lot of charging stations coming to Palm Tran. And I also understand that the Palm Beach County School District has purchased a lot more buses, electric buses. So let's have a happy little competition and see if, who can get the most buses the fastest. I don't know, how can we move this along? Let's make it a fun competition. I'd also like to speak to you about fertilizer ordinances. I know Palm Beach County does have an ordinance, but it is missing the timing of fertilizer application, which the Village of North Palm Beach has in their ordinance. It's section 27-71, and the particular paragraph is section 27-76, timing of fertilizer application. No applicator shall apply fertilizers containing nitrogen or phosphorus to turf and/or landscaping plants during the rainy period from June 1st through October 31st. If Palm Beach County would enact something like that, we might be able to help keep our wonderful lagoon a little cleaner from the green algae, because everyone fertilizes like crazy. It rains, five minutes later, and it all gets washed down the sewer. I am often the person that looks a little bit like a bag person, walking up and down Center Street with two Four Oceans bags picking up trash along Center Street. All of the plastic waste that's on Center Street goes down a storm drain. The lawnmowers come through, they chop up the stuff, the water bottles, the fertilizer, the pesticides, and then it rains, and it all goes into the Laxahatchee River. So I am also imploring you to please try to reduce single-use plastics. There are ample, and I have talked to you often, about the different types of ordinances that different municipalities have passed. They have passed the courts, so they're legal, they're not stretching the rules or anything like that. I am at least been calling Palm Beach County for the last six months, trying to see when the vending machine contracts are due, so that we could put something in there to try to reduce the number of plastic bottles in Palm Beach County vending machines on your property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Loesman, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, congratulations on your new position. I'm here to talk about David Ehrenberg. David Ehrenberg, the county residents should have a confidence that their state attorney is a man of integrity, and David Ehrenberg is not. I'm gonna fill in some of the blanks. For those of you who've read the Palm Beach Post over the last few months, Jane Musgrave wrote in a series of stories regarding a transcript that the Palm Beach Post Miami Herald wanted to get from his ex-wife in a criminal case, Straub, the Straub case. Ehrenberg has crossed paths with me a number of times, most recently when I was arrested twice last year for trespassing on my own property on Singer Island. How could that happen? Why would he do that? He did that because I exposed him for throwing away, for discarding, a four-month investigation that resulted in a probable cause affidavit for a white gentleman named Jeff Gagnon, who works for the county, for illegally firing the black building official, Lady March Goh War. He decided to come after me, even though his senior staff said, "Don't do it." He came after me, we had a jury trial, I got a judgment of acquittal against two assistant state attorneys. That just doesn't happen normally for lawyers, certainly never happened for pro-state party. So what I've done is people feed me information. Well, they don't really need to feed me a lot of information, because the Miami Herald and Palm Beach Post have filed a lawsuit to get the transcript where Lynn Ehrenberg discussed what Dave Ehrenberg did to her. The judge, Judge Bailey in Broward County, he sealed that transcript. He sealed that transcript to cover up a crime that Dave Ehrenberg committed. Dave Ehrenberg engaged in 784.041-
Mr. Loesman, I'm gonna ask you-
Which is, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Loesman, I'm gonna stop the clock. You do realize that Mr. Ehrenberg does not report to this body. Mr. Ehrenberg is a constitutional officer who reports to the voters and to the governor, and we have no authority over Mr. Ehrenberg.
I realize that. I have a First Amendment right to make my public comments, I've been in the U.S. Supreme Court, I understand what I can say. You don't have to agree with what I have to say, but you have to let me make my comments.
Continue.
My comments are, it's not a secret what happened in his marriage with Lynn Ehrenberg. He engaged in domestic violence, specifically a third-degree felony battery by strangulation. That has been sealed by Judge Bailey. The Miami Herald wants it, the Palm Beach Post wants it, go look up all the stories Jane Musgrave wrote about it, okay? If that transcript becomes unsealed by the media, he will be forced to resign. We cannot have a state attorney-
Mr. Loesman, you're making accusations which I don't believe you can back up with fact. I think you need to consult an attorney before you continue this conversation.
Sir, again, you're talking about a guy who went to the U.S. Supreme Court, I'm an expert in what the First Amendment covered, if you don't agree with it, no one is forcing you to be an elected official. You're not here to act as an advocate for Dave Ehrenberg. I'm allowed to tell to the county taxpayers that this man who has gone out of his way, that this man who has gone out of his way to keep that transcript sealed-
I am going to rule your comments out of order. If you'd like to submit them in writing, we'll accept them, but I can't allow you to be having this conversation, because it really, there's no factual basis for anything that you're saying right now.
There is a factual-
Commissioner McKinley, did you want to be recognized?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to be recognized. I prefer that the three minutes conclude, and then I'll make my comments.
Let's put, let's put it as something else that the taxpayers are engaged in. The taxpayers funded his legal defense by having an assistant state attorney represent him individually until he retained criminal counsel. That is a fact. Lee Miller represented him in a private matter that the county taxpayers funded her salary until finally he went out and got private counsel. Why should the taxpayers fund his legal bills with our taxpayers' dollars? Okay? Have you went and reviewed the record? Have you went and reviewed the filings by the Miami Herald, by the Palm Beach Post? I don't know if you read the paper, it's a very big story. At the chief law enforcement officer, we expect to have a man of integrity and honor in that position. Palm Beach Post, Miami Herald, and myself, we know what's in that transcript. It's not a secret, it leaked out from the Broward State Attorney's Office to the Palm Beach County State Attorney's Office, okay? If that transcript becomes unsealed, he will be forced to resign. Okay? But that's neither here nor there. If you're concerned about the county mayor, why don't you ask, why are taxpayers' dollars funding his personal legal affairs for, you know, I don't know how many months until he finally got his own criminal attorneys? His personal legal affairs should not be funded by anyone in this room who pays property taxes, okay? I'm gonna be the man that takes Ehrenberg down, or the Palm Beach Post and Miami Herald-
Your time is up, thank you very much, your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna let those comments go unaddressed. I have worked as a volunteer and a friend and a fellow elected official, and served on numerous committees with Mr. Ehrenberg back since 2008. I have never worked with an elected official with more integrity than Dave Ehrenberg. And Mr. Loesman, you have spoken before this commission on a lot of valid points concerning property rights, and I've listened to those comments for years, and respected your position, and certainly have respected your ability to get your cases heard as a layman before the U.S. Supreme Court. But those comments today are out of line, those records are sealed, and none of us know what's in those records. But the courts have determined that they're not related to the case that was at hand, and deemed that it was okay to keep those records sealed. I find that making criminal allegations like that against anyone is completely out of line, and I will stand here and I will defend Dave Ehrenberg and his decisions and his actions until my last breath on earth. And any type of smear job by his ex-wife, who's been a publicity hound since she got divorced from him, is unacceptable to me. And if the Nikodomo, and I forgot the Straub case, is that his last name? I mean, if the courts determined that they would release that information relevant to that case, and both of the publications and the media that were requesting those documents declined that. So that's, that was their decision. But I won't stand here and let anybody smear a fabulous elected official like Dave Ehrenberg and not let those comments go addressed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no further comments, no further cards, if anybody else would like to be heard?
Can I ask a question?
Nope, no questions, just comments, and you've already had your opportunity. All right, so public matters by the public is closed, we're gonna return to our agenda from this morning. Okay, we're gonna move on to board appointments. Commissioner Sacks, do you have any board appointments?
I wonder if you could go from right to left this time? Just give me a minute, and I'll check it out.
Very good.
Sort of taking a back, thank you.
Commissioner McKinley, while Commissioner Sacks is checking her notes.
I do not have any today, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I have two. I would like to reappoint Mr. Doug Sanders to the Aviation and Airport Advisory Board.
Do I have a second? I have a second by the vice mayor. All in favor, all opposed, show it's approved, five to zero.
I would also like to reappoint Ms. Robin Henderson to the Housing Finance Authority Board.
Seconded by the vice mayor, all in favor, all opposed, show it's approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, I have no appointments at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. On behalf of Commissioner Bernard in District Seven, I'd like to request the following Leon, and I apologize for getting these names messed up, but Leon Teen Brown for the Advisory Commission on Women, Katrina Long Robinson for the Advisory Commission on Women, Johnny Ray Thiclin for the Fair Housing Equal Employment Board, and Walter O'Shea Granger for Palm Beach County Sports Commission.
Do I have a second on that list of appointments? Yeah?
I will, I'll be happy to second that, but can we double, is Katrina not already on the Commission on Women? I thought she was one of-
The reappointment.
Oh, okay.
These are, these are all, just to clarify, these are all reappointments.
Commissioner McKinley making a second to the District Seven appoint, reappointments that have been presented by the vice mayor. All in favor, all opposed, show it five to zero.
And on behalf of District Four, I would like to ask the board to appoint Dr. Heidi Shaefer to the Commission on Women Advisory Board.
I'm looking for a second. I have a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed, show it is approved, five to zero.
And on behalf of myself in District Two, I'd like to ask that we reappoint Tony LaFon, Anthony Tony LaFonzo to the Sports Commission.
I have a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed, again, five to zero. Okay, we are done with our appointments, now we're gonna move on to our county administrator. What you got over there?
Aloha.
We didn't get any grass skirts, we didn't get any macadamia nuts, you have to go back.
Today? Just the board directives. I do want to update you on retaining the third-party consultant on development of West State Road Seven. It is in process, we've reached out to a number of consultants, we're down to two, and so we'll continue to work through that process. We request the staff to bring back a resolution authorizing the renewal of the Commission on Women that I think expires in next quarter, next year, beginning of the year. We'll bring that item back to the board at the first meeting in January to renew it, if it is the board's desire, but that was requested for us to do that.
Just on the Commission on Women, there's been a little confusion on appointments that I've sent over there, I don't know if, what the kerfuffle was, but there was an appointment that sort of sat for a few months, and all of a sudden now there's another appointment being made for that same spot. I don't know what's going on there, and I don't-
I will find out.
I think maybe if you could just sort of figure out what's going on with the staffing over there, it would be appreciated.
We're working on the summit regarding, the women's summit from Commission on Women as directed by the board, and we anticipate sometime late October, we're moving forward. The review, you gave us directions today regarding the Impact Fee Review Committee and adding on the AGC as a seat, we'll be following up on that as well. And then the Impact Fee Review Committee term limits, after further review, we'll be bringing an agenda item back to you that if the board approves an exemption to the rules as far as the term limits are concerned, then we can, those can be waived, so we'll be bringing that item back to you as well. Parking spaces, the contract with the south end of the county, the south admin spaces is in the hands of the applicant. The other, we're still working with DDA and the City of West Palm on that particular one. Unsafe living conditions, we anticipate bringing you back an update in November, no later than December of this year. And as far as the body cams are concerned with the sheriff, had a discussion with him, they are moving forward, they've selected a vendor, and then they'll start their negotiations with that vendor.
The only comment I would have is from this morning, that we have some discussion, either workshop or a report from staff on how we can handle the waiving of code penalties in the future.
That's on my list to add.
It's on your list.
It's on my list to add from today, as a directive.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, county attorney, I got a light.
Yeah, I'm sorry, as somebody who is on the prevailing side of the previous motion, I need to do a motion to reconsider the appointment of Katrina Long Robinson to the Commission on Women. On July 28th at our county commission meeting, I reappointed Katrina Long Robinson to that commission for a term October 1, 2022, to September 30th, 2025, so she's already on the committee.
Okay.
So I'd just like to make a motion to reconsider her appointment and just give it back to the district commissioner, reconsider.
Okay, can I have a second on the motion to reconsider? Got a motion seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Now that, we'll have vote, all in favor, all opposed, the motion to reconsider has been approved, we're now reconsider the appointment, and the appointment will strike that name from the list. Do you have the whole list, or?
Could you just please repeat the name of the individual?
Katrina Long Robinson.
Thank you.
Okay, so Katrina Long Robinson will now be stricken from the motion that the vice mayor made on behalf of District Seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed, show the new motion has been approved, five to zero. We clean that up. Okay. County attorney.
Can't appoint her twice.
We done okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A woman a few words. Commissioner Moreno, we'll give you first up.
I'm gonna go last.
You wanna go last? Okay, then I'm gonna go in reverse order. Commissioner McKinley.
Look at that. Thank you, just a quick thanks to the Parks and Recreation Team, the Orange Bowl Committee, particularly under the leadership of Sean Pittman, who brought it to us in the first place, and to Ms. Baker and her whole administration team for the great work doing Phase Two of Orange Bowl Field out at Pioneer Park in Belgrade. We had a wonderful celebration, opening up that new community building and the new air-conditioned restrooms and stuff, and it was great to hear the kids out there playing on Saturday, and the parents cheering, and we've got bleachers that are still on order coming in with shaded areas for the parents, and if you were out there on Saturday, you would know why we need to sit in the shade. But it was just a great event, and I think the really cool part, you know, Sean Pittman is the, he was the chair of the Orange Bowl Foundation when that project came forward to us, but he also grew up in Riviera Beach, and he played football in some of the youth leagues there. And that particular day in Belgrade, the team he played for, that was the team that was out there playing, one of the Belgrade teams, so he got to stand with all the little kids on the field from the team, that helped raise him, it was just a really great moment. But thank you to everybody who showed up there on Saturday, and Ms. Baker, thank you to your team for doing such a great job.
Thank you for your leadership on that project.
Okay, now we're-
Mayor, may I be recognized, sir?
Absolutely.
I believe we have a motion to receive and file proof of publication under 9A.
Sound moved.
I got a motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the vice mayor. Thank you for pointing that out.
All in favor? All in favor?
All in favor, all opposed, five to zero. Okay, we'll get this done yet. You know, it's late, it's 2:30, and we've got a full day ahead of us. Commissioner Sacks, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, on the commissioner comments, I have a request for an off-site certificate of congratulations to be presented to Linda Larvy on her 70th birthday.
Why?
Why not? And I have another request for an off-site certificate of congratulations presented to Andrea Shore on her 70th birthday.
Do I have a second?
No seconds.
Vice mayor seconded, all in favor, all opposed.
Thank you.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay.
I'll tell you why, but when I got it.
All right, you're gonna show that as a four to one, okay. Any other?
Comments?
Comments? Yes, we're on comments time.
Okay, well, do we have time for, later on for comments, is to something neat that we did?
This is wide open, Commissioner.
All right, great. I was, I'm very pleased to have been, participated in a symposium on law at the world's first law school, the University of Naples of Jurisprudensa in Naples, Italy, and the discussion led into women's advances in law and politics, and I was very pleased to be part of that. And I just am excited about women going forward all over the world, because it was participated in by members of the European Union, as well as professors from the University of Naples Law School, and it was fun.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, okay, we got a few from here for people who are not around, so Commissioner, vice mayor, would you take care of this one? And Commissioner Kerner as well.
All right, let's see, I'd like to request on behalf of District Four, a request for an off-site proclamation declaring September 25th through October 1st, 2022, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in Palm Beach County.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed, five to zero.
And I think this was, has this already been handled, or? Anyways, we handled, we handled Eric Cole?
Yeah, you know what, we did that, yeah, he brought that forward on his memo, yeah, okay.
All right.
That was the Eric Cole Parkway, which we took care of before, okay.
And then, and let's see, just, I want to just clarify to my colleague in District Five, it says down here you're requesting an off-site certificate of congratulations on the-
Hold on a second.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Sacks, so it was, should your motion have been, request for an off-site certificate of congratulations as opposed to a proclamation?
Did I not say congratulations? I did, I stand corrected, so let the record reflect that a certificate of congratulations presented, and when you're 70 years old, whatever the heck it is, it's a good thing to reach that age. So it is, so let the record-
The record is corrected.
-reflect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're very welcome. All right, on behalf of District Two, I would like to request approval for an off-site proclamation-
Certificate.
Get approval.
I got four certificates here.
Get, no, no, I'm not doing those, I already did them.
Oh, okay.
They already were delivered today. Approval for an off-site proclamation, and this is for National Gay Men's HIV/AIDS Awareness Day on September 27th, 2022.
I'm looking for a second. I got a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed, five to zero.
Okay, and then, let's see, I'd also, I really want to thank our staff of Community Services, James Green, Virginia Savietto, who is part of my office staff, for really working to make this year's Hispanic Heritage Month even more inclusive and better than we have in the past. And one of the items that they're going to be doing is, thanks to Palm Tran, which they have also participated in the past, but they're wrapping one of the buses, and you all went out and had your pictures taken today, but that bus is gonna be making a bus tour around Palm Beach County, visiting a number of sites that are- number of sites that are Hispanic heritage organizations, and they're going to be celebrating and highlighting the contributions, cultural and economic impacts to the Hispanic Latino community in Palm Beach County. And that is going to be on Thursday, September 15. You'll see the bus traveling around, and onboard will be members of Community Services, but also members of a wide variety of organizations as well outside of the county. They will be departing, and this is for, no, just be departing at 9:00 AM sharp. That's what it says here, and so everybody who is going to be on the bus, be sure to be there. And then lastly, just want to, again, thank members of our fire rescue. We attended a 9/11 memorial recognition event, again, this year, the 21st anniversary of 9/11. And as Mayor, as you had pointed out, they really focused on young people, many of them who were not alive at the time, so that they also have a better understanding of our history, and that is something that we never forget as a nation, and that hopefully, as we reflect on it, it helps us come together, celebrating one another, our differences, but that we're all Americans, and that we all care deeply and love this country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, Commissioner Marino, your turn.
Thank you. On a happy note, I would like to say that the Student Aces Program, and I know many of you know Buck Martinez, they're doing, their girls softball is now being done at Dyer Park, so I had the opportunity to talk with the young ladies last week, and they're excited to be at Dyer, and they wanted to pass on their congratulations to the county for the conditions of their parks and how easy it is to work with our Parks and Rec Department, so I wanted to pass that on. I did want to say thank you to the town of Juneau for inviting me to be the keynote speaker on Sunday for the 9/11 memorial, and as Greg said, you know, it's, there's often things that divide us, and we do need to come together more often as a country. Having said that, I'd also like to move to something a little less serious, but a little strange. We need to revisit our policy on certificates and proclamations and whatnot, and Maria, while 70 is a great age, my dad turned 90, and I didn't do a proclamation for him. I mean, I probably should have asked for a proclamation for my dad. No comments, Maria.
I'll do it.
No comments, Maria. This is my turn to talk. I think that, you know, we have a job to do, and we spent the first hour and a half of our day today doing proclamations, and I realize that, you know, there's a policy that's in place, it's come before me, there'll probably be another one that comes after me, but, you know, we are also here to do the business of the county and not, and I think we need to really look at what we do in the way of proclamations, how many we give out, and how much time we make, we make the public sit here and wait for the business to be conducted while we're doing proclamations and certificates of recognition and whatnot. I think they're really, yes, we want people to be recognized for the good work that they do and the long lives that they live. Again, my dad turned 90, my mom's 87, and we have a lot of people in our county that are 70 years old. So I would like to just see something going forward where maybe there is a policy in place as to how those proclamations are put forth, you know, districts. We all are entitled to do proclamations, and we all like to recognize people or businesses in our district, so I just, I don't know, I'm rambling, but I think it's something worth looking into. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. Let me make just a point of information on it and maybe conversation on it, whatever. To Commissioner Sacks's defense, this is a request for off-site, so it wasn't for here. We have a policy, which was in place before I showed up here, that each commissioner is allowed two per session, and so, you know, I guess that's Commissioner Melissa McKinley when she was chair of this or mayor of this body. I would say too is, you know, it gets long sometimes, and, you know, when we had the pandemic, we put them on abeyance, and then we got more work done probably, but I personally think that they are a good thing. I think we get to celebrate some good things, and, you know, it was nice to see the bear here today and, you know, congratulate him on what he's done. I have no real problem with anything off-site, whether it's a certificate of congratulations or a proclamation, and I think that if this body wants to trim down the number of in-chamber proclamations, we should have that discussion. Yeah, it was about 11 o'clock before we got on to the business on the agenda, and people sat here who were hoping that their matter was going to be brought forward at 9:30, not at 11 o'clock. So that certainly is ripe for a conversation and, you know, but I think in deference to the request that was made today, offsites, I don't think there should be any limit on them, and I think as long as they're for something that we don't feel is inappropriate, that there should be no reason to say no. I think Eric Cole was certainly someone that I was very happy to see that Commissioner Kerner recognized today. I think it's great he's going to have his own Parkway in the middle of the park, and I think that's terrific. And like Vice Mayor Weiss said, I think the 911 remembrance ceremony was particularly poignant for me this year because it was not just a rehash of what we know was a terrible day 21 years ago, but it was also an opportunity to see how the children who were not around then are now learning about that, and it's becoming part of the fabric of what they understand as our history. So I thought that was a great opportunity to hear from them. Lastly, when I was born, there was a queen. I was born in 1952, when she took the throne. And 70 years later, she has passed, and I think while we did have a war against the country, to break away from them, I think she was a very, very stately woman who did great things for Great Britain, and I certainly think that we need to acknowledge a great life as a, as the monarch and as the figurehead for that country. And certainly she will be missed, and we wish only the best to King Charles. And Vice Weiss, you'd like to add your two cents.
Well, since I just learned you're 70, can I offer a proclamation?
You missed it. It was June 9.
Okay, sorry. I retract.
Okay. All right. All right. I'm done. Commissioner Sacks, you'll recognize one more time, then.
I just, I just think it was beautiful what you said, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Weiss about 9/11, which, when you think about what happened last week, that was, that was very poignant, and of course, the passing of the queen. Talk about a woman mentor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
County Administrator.
Unfortunately, I have to bring up the appointment to the, for Katrina Long Robinson that Commissioner Bernard brought up. It was for a short period of time between August 29 and September 30. Commissioner McKinley's nomination or appointment began October 1 of 2022 to September 30 of 2025. And, you know, either we have to go with the appointment for Bernard, Commissioner Bernard, for that short period of time, or this board always has the option to waive the requirement and put her back on.
Did I hear another motion to reconsider?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for the confusion. I guess staff was unaware that she was my appointee, and my office was never notified that this needed to take place. So this is a short term. And Vice Mayor Weiss, my apologies for causing confusion on your motion, but I remembered she'd already been reappointed, so I wasn't quite sure what the story was, and learned that after we had reconsidered. So this is for an appointment through September 30 of 2022, and then my original appointment that was made back in July will take effect on October 1. So I would make that motion on behalf of Commissioner Bernard, and apologize for any confusion if the vice mayor would like to second that.
All right. All right. So I have a motion again, this time by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the vice mayor. The clerk is just busy getting the whiteout.
Sorry about that, and I apologize to Ms. Long Robinson as well.
All right. On that note, Commissioner McKinley, is that the last word?
That is, if you want to call the vote, Mr. Mayor.
We are going to be adjourned. As I said, we're back here at 5:05, and we have a budget to consider.
And that motion passed, all in favor, five to zero, correct?
Five to zero. You got that? Five to zero. We're out of here. Adjourned.